All right, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. This is our workshop meeting at the airport. It is June the 12th, 11:30. If you will, if you'll bow with me and if you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance when we're done. Father, thank you for this day. Lord, I ask that you give us wisdom today, that you give us guidance to make the decisions that we need to make. Lord, I thank you for the people that are sitting at this table, the people in this room, and the people who are working hard for the residents of Murfreesboro every day. Lord, I lift up those prayers, both spoken and unspoken. Be with us and bless us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's move to items that we have on action. We have sponsorship ordinance 25001. This is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Second, please call the roll.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
You have the stormwater budget fee resolution. It's Water Resources, Resolution 25R16.
All right, so, good morning. Our stormwater budget is balanced with revenues to expenses at 4.15 million. This includes a proposed stormwater user fee increase of 25 cents per single-family equivalent for a total fee of $3.50. The fee hasn't been increased since 2008. The rate increase was presented by Darren at the April workshop, and the stormwater budget was presented at the special budget meeting May 22nd. We request approval of the fee resolution and budget resolutions, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Motion second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, that was for Resolution 25R16. We now need to consider Resolution 25R07.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, all right, we have a housing rehabilitation request at 923 Harrison Avenue. Ms. Holtz.
Good morning, Mayor, and council members. The item before you is a construction contract to rehab the house, 923 Harrison Avenue, for a total cost of $38,520, I believe. It's all coming out of the CDBG funds. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, all right, let's move to our workshop items. We have the Tennessee College of Applied Technology Auto Body Collaboration. Raymond.
Mayor, while Raymond comes up, I would say that this is for information only, however, if you all deem it appropriate, we can move forward with some task orders immediately with TCAT if you find, if there's not any questions.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity. We're excited to bring this before you. Got a couple gentlemen, if they would, join me this morning to help me present what it is that TCAT does. I look at this, I know you guys have already read your council communication, but I really look at this as the tip of the iceberg of a potential that we can work with a local college here, not only in just auto body repair, but also, they have a big field in electrical work, HVAC, mechanical, so, really, we want to start this partnership with the auto body side of it, and hopefully, it branches into even more, and when these students come out of college, if we have openings in the city of Murfreesboro, we could talk to them and possibly hire them going forward, so, just really excited about this, but we're going to start with this auto body repair shop, and so, or collision center, and these gentlemen here are experts in the field, and I'll let them tell them a little bit about their program, but just so you know that going forward, this is more of a trial basis, if you guys approve this, we want to send a work truck type vehicle that we may have through first, and we want to try to keep our emergency vehicles out of it for now, just till we get started and see how things go, but we really are, we're really excited about this and excited about the program, so, Eric, Phillip, any of you guys want to say something, please feel free to do so, so.
How you doing? My name's Eric Love. I'm the lead instructor over collision and automotive at Tennessee College of Applied Technology. Basically, what we want to do is give our students an opportunity to have something other than a trainer to work on and repair, and what it'll do is give them the opportunity to actually, you know, see some kind of live work to, hey, you've got this amount of time to get this done and out, and it really benefits a student in that manner. We do all kinds of stuff as far as HVAC, we teach a lot of stuff at TCAT, and we love to help the city of Murfreesboro any way we can, so, because we want to be part of our community, we are the state of Tennessee, but we want to be part of our community also. The city of Murfreesboro is part of our community, so, any way we can help you guys, you let us know.
Thank you, Eric, appreciate that. So you guys do have that live work order attached to the council communication that Adam's already reviewed to form, we're good with it, but it is a form that these guys have to have. Now, Eric did tell me, and my council communication says there's a $5 shop fee, Eric did tell me that that would be waived for the city of Murfreesboro, and how we'll set that up is we have, and I've got Tommy back there in the back, we have our own parts guy that works for the city, so, city of Murfreesboro buys its own parts, they're delivered to Fleet, and the Fleet installs them. We'll do something similar with these guys where Eric can call for the parts that he needs directly to our Fleet service, parts guy can order the parts, have them dropped off at their location, and when the vehicle's finished, we pick it up. So to me, it's a win-win, right? I mean, we're labor-free, we pay for the parks, work's done, it's under great supervision, these guys are going to inspect everything that comes out, and so, that's it. Whatever you guys want to do, if you want to think about it, come back later.
I'm glad to see this coming, because when I was in high school in the '60s, we used to have what you call vocational.
Yes.
Shop.
Me and Tommy were just talking about that.
Yeah, and they had mechanic, electrical, plumbing, and the guys were learning that, and I think that's excellent, because so many kids are graduating without a job, and these are big-paying jobs.
Yeah.
So I really thank you all for coming forward with that.
Yes.
I just want to say this to the city, I always wanted to, I wanted to thank you, because I worked here from '02 to '08 at Fleet Service, and while I was there, I was able to get my ASE Automotive Masters Certification, and it was because of the city that I got that, and I just wanted to thank y'all for that, and I really appreciate it.
I think it's a great thing, and I'm willing to move on it, but I'd like to know what other kind of opportunities we could have with the city also. I mean, this is a great way to take students into maybe jobs in our different departments as they graduate as well, so, I think there's a lot more bigger opportunity than just what we're doing right now.
Absolutely.
If you haven't had a chance to tour their facility, it is remarkable to realize this is very practical training, you know, to leads directly to jobs, and I think a lot of times, you know, schooling, sometimes, we're not sure where, when and where it's going to lead to a job, but what they're doing out there is just remarkable, and if you haven't had a chance to tour their facility, you ought to take the opportunity to go see what they're doing, because it's just amazing, so, yes, I'm very much in support of this.
I think it's a wonderful idea, and I'm just, I guess, appreciative that you guys were willing to do this, and willing to take this on, I think it's a win for everybody, especially if Madeline were to need some automobile.
We'll fix Madeline up.
Not that I'm saying that you need.
I thought Jamie would need it.
Maybe Jamie.
Jamie may need it more.
But Jamie may need it more, okay.
Great idea, I'll make the motion to approve.
I hit one curb at City Hall, and here we are.
Real quick, before the motion, just want to make sure that you all understand that there is a release of liability.
Yeah, that's actually the only reason that we asked this to come to City Councils, because under the contract, the city would be releasing claims against TCAT.
Do you need, I mean, if you see all of us shaking our head, we don't really have anything to vote on, do you need a motion or a vote?
That was the intent when it got put on the agenda, so just a quick.
We have a motion.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, hey, thank you, gentlemen, and thank y'all for what y'all are doing in our community. All right, let's move to Oxford, Mississippi, downtown activation research.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thanks for having us here today. So, we're here today not really asking for anything at this point, really just to share ideas, give an update, and plant some seeds for some future ideas. So I'll start off with a question, does anyone know what the number-one area that produces revenue per acre, what's our number-one area tax revenue per acre? Costco, not Walmart?
Dollar General.
Your historic downtown Murfreesboro. Several years ago, city hired a consultant to look at downtown activation and see what, you know, see what we can do there, and he really said, you know, we're missing an opportunity by not fully activating the downtown, the second-floor spaces and other areas. So we're taking that in Development Services and trying to research and see what we can do to really help develop fully the downtown areas. And so, I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that we learned when we took a trip to Oxford, the directors of Development Services, some of the things that we gleaned from that and the takeaways, and maybe some of those that, you know, if you have favor with those, maybe we can try that kind of stuff here and see if it works. So I'll talk a little bit about downtown balconies, front porch areas, area trash collection, and metered parking. Kevin will finish up with a little bit of next steps and where we can go from there. So, really, just to start out, this is an area of downtown Oxford, and you can see this building on the top here added this porch on the side with some steps that access the top. You know, this was done, it's not historic, this was done prior to the downtown being designated historic, but what it did is it added square footage to this building that it didn't have. It brought economic development to this building and to the owner of the building. People want to go there, they want to sit outside, so, not only does it add square footage, but it brings people to the area. You can see the bottom picture shows the same thing, a lot of people out here, it also sort of acts as rain cover when people are walking around downtown, and there's a big storm that rolls in, you can still stay out there. So, brings a lot of economic development, attracts more customers. One of the interesting things is this is in the public right-of-way as well, so what they did is they did a revocable license for these, have a structural engineer come in every five years, certify it, and then they keep moving. Outdoor dining expansion, front patios was something else that Oxford did. So when COVID hit, a lot of people were moving outside to eat, and that happened in Oxford. It was such a good thing for the folks that own these buildings and the tenants, that they continued it and they expanded it. So what they did is they came into the public right-of-way, got rid of some of the street parking that would have been on the front of this building, expanded the sidewalk, put in planters, and then they declared that space surplus land and leased it back to the tenants there. So the city did the public infrastructure, paid for it, and the city's recouping that money by leasing that space back to the tenant. Same thing as the balconies, it brings people in, they want to see it, they want to be there, brings in more revenue for the tenant and for the city. This is what it looked like before, you can see, you know, not great, they came in, the top picture is what it looks like after, looks much better, and again, win-win for the city. Another item that we saw is trash enclosures, you know, our alleyways, you see a lot of trash cans, a lot of single trash cans that go to different businesses, and it's really cluttered up. So what Oxford did is they divided the city into zones, and then they installed a trash enclosure that is for that zone, so once that's installed, and they haven't done it all over the city yet, this is their first one, but once that's installed, those occupants are no longer allowed to store their trash outside, store it inside and get rid of it themselves somehow, or they come to the city and use this city service so that they can keep the streets clean, keep the alleyways clean, and really make it look good. Inside, it has grease drain, steam pressure washer to keep it clean, and then a trash compactor so that people can come in and get rid of it. This is an example, the top picture is an alleyway looking one direction, the bottom picture is 180 degrees looking the other direction. The bottom picture is where that trash receptacle was installed, the city also took it upon itself to get rid of some of the old wooden steps that were there, similar to what we have in some of our alleyways, gave it shared access to the buildings, upgraded it, looks really good, more inviting than what the top picture. That top picture, when it gets an area trash enclosure, it'll look like the bottom picture. Again, the city did this at the city's expense, funded it, recouping the money based on the paid service that the buildings have there. Another opportunity that Oxford saw that they needed was a parking garage. As the downtown was developing, more people were coming down, they needed parking. This picture here, the blue area, shows where the parking garage now sits. Prior to its existence, the city created a parking commission that installed meters throughout downtown. They collected those fees, put it in a fund, held on to it for a little bit, a couple years later, built the parking garage. These meters generate enough income to pay for the financing of that parking garage. I think by the time we were there, they had already generated about $800,000 year-to-date. So, large economic impact for the city, it paid for itself. They said it took a little, maybe a year or so for the people downtown to get used to that parking meter, but it kept people moving, kept that revenue stream coming in, and so, again, it was a win-win. So, lastly, and I'll let Kevin conclude, but I just wanted to show you these two pictures. The top picture here is the city of Murfreesboro, the bottom picture is Oxford, and very similar in size. The big difference that you see, I think, is the porches around the square in Oxford and that economic impact that it has, and the square footage that it adds, and the people that it brings in. So again, not asking for anything, but wanted to give that update, I'll let Kevin conclude.
Just another thing y'all pointed out that Oxford did, these look very similar, one-way, one-way traffic around the square, so, that's kind of one thing that I did notice there, but, excuse me, so, kind of to wrap this thing up, so, how do we put all this together to move forward? Right now, KDGI has worked on a downtown study, Brandon's here, so, we're going to use that study kind of as a roadmap to how we move forward, work with those guys in the community. Our team, along with Greg McKnight, Development Services, we've also met with Sarah at Main Street many times. We're starting to get business owners and stakeholders excited. I know recently, we've been in six or seven of the second-floor spaces that we're trying to get activated. Again, not as the building and codes guy, but how can we help you? I'm excited about this as well, and I want to make these spaces, get these activated, get these people up in them. So, as we're doing this, kind of formulated a needs assessment plan to what's most beneficial, you know, me looking at our square, we got almost like four quadrants, and our square is kind of funny about how the way the building's back up, some have no back to them, some back into other buildings. Oxford, they're a little clean, they had clean alleyways, so you really didn't have these corner buildings like we have on our square. So, you know, those people have no way to put a second exit in, but how can we help them do that? So again, we're going to kind of formulate what each building needs, is that a sprinkler system, is that egress? Can we do some type of shared egress like we saw at Oxford on the back of that building? Maybe we tie a second-floor shared egress to help everybody exit these spaces, so, egress, parking, patio areas, and security. And how do we do this? We have current tools with existing building code, we didn't have that six, seven years ago, we adopted that last code cycle, there's a little more leeway that we have code-wise to make some of this stuff happen. We've also met with Metro Building Codes, I called those guys, I was like, you have old buildings, how do y'all do this? Like, there's got to be a way to help these people out. So they actually formed a downtown rehabilitation committee to meet on certain topics, like, say you have a building with no way to go out the back, how can we solve that? So they put a team together with their building official, fire marshal, local contractors, architects, to work with these people to come up with better ways, other solutions. I think that's something that we can implement here, and I think we'll move forward to that once we figure out with the downtown study and kind of us reassessing all these buildings, how can we do that? And the last thing, we just got to keep the ball rolling, I think right now, we're excited after seeing what Oxford did, I think we see that we can do that. Meeting with the business owners, I'm asking, hey, what's your wish list? What do you want to do? And I'm going to see how we can make that happen. And then again, the roadmap that KDGI has given us, so, I think we can make some of this stuff happen and if we just keep the momentum up.
That's great.
I got a question that's way outside the box. What would it look like if we kind of activated the roadway like Market Square in Knoxville, instead of having a roadway, activate the sidewalks all the way through the roadway, block traffic around the outer circle, have Main Street go straight through with automatic ballers, that if we wanted to block Main for Friday Night Live or something like that, it could be easily blocked off, but for the majority of the time, the whole square being activated for sidewalk performers or the restaurants or whatever, instead of having an outer circle?
Yeah, I think that's something that's, when we were leaving, they were actually, Oxford was having a large festival, and of course, with their SEC, that's an SEC town, they bring in hundreds of thousands of people for game day, but they were actually shutting their square down for this festival, for the whole weekend. So, I mean, that's definitely something that, you know, again, this was just for, just to kind of show you guys what we learned and kind of how we're moving forward, so, again, we're not making any decisions, but that's something, again, that we can.
Kevin, did you, oh, I'm sorry.
Picture of Oxford, it looked like there were some sections that had the second-story covered and some that didn't.
Right.
So it wouldn't be just one side spits all, it could actually be individualized to, I guess, the needs of the business and so forth. I mean, it'd be nice to have a double-decker all the way around the square, but it may not make sense, say, for example, it's say, the election commission, for example.
Right.
Unless they want to go out there and have cocktails after they count votes and stuff like that.
Each building, I don't want to drag this on too long, but I know, I met with Marina's, Marina's is looking at doing something like that. I really see the corners, our corners, to me, would be easy spaces to try that, kind of bump out, you get a bang for your buck, you could tie a couple tenants in together, but it's really what do the business owners want to do with their space in the future?
And back to Sean's point, one of your photos, two or three slides before, it showed Uber West Zone drop-off, do they basically have designated points around their square right there?
Yeah.
That's the pickup location, they have like no Ubers on the square, but certain points to pick up and drop off like another?
Yeah, that's, we noticed that when we were there, that they did have some of these for people to congregate, you know, if it's outside of a large gathering place, they'll probably set that up so that there's not a parking space there, but it's a pickup location, add some safety.
And there were a lot of alleyways behind the buildings, they actually did lighting, string lighting for safety, so people feel comfortable walking through these alleyways.
Okay. Maintained by the city.
Yeah. Is it possible, I mean, this is great stuff, I mean, I know, you look through this and you get excited seeing, I mean, almost like a mirror image of Murfreesboro, and I'd love your comment under the conclusion about keep the ball rolling, I mean, that's the key, but there's two things I wrote down as we're going through the presentation that hit me, you know, we had a town hall on Minerva, and then we had a town hall out in Blackman. It would be great to find a spot and do a town hall downtown for not only just the residents downtown, but for the businesses downtown, and I could see this as being a great thing to show the downtown people what we're looking at. But the second thing that's going to be the catalyst to all this, we're in the process with One East College to talk about what's next with that, but everything that you just showed all hinges on downtown parking, and then the other part, too, is getting, this is my opinion, getting government services off the square. So, you know, where people are coming in for election commission, they're coming in for building and codes, you've got, what's the, is it, what's the court services that are on the square?
Which square?
Parole, isn't that on the square?
Yeah, it is. It's in the old.
Probation is in the old judicial building.
So, you know, what's happening now is.
I'm not on probation. You were asking.
Parole, you're not on parole either.
I mean, we need to have the discussion with the county that, you know, we've talked about, one of the integral parts of the One East College property was to be able to get the structured parking, and I could see that also being a partnership with the county to build some governmental spaces off the square, where you've got some of those places that could relocate, and you're taking, as you said, our highest generating proper sales tax, property tax in that downtown property, and you're taking those governmental services that don't pay anything, and put them in areas where people will have parking, they can come in and out, and then reactivate the downtown for small business owners and tourists and people who want to come and enjoy the downtown. I mean, I don't know, did Oxford have a lot of governmental buildings? This is City Hall, this is their City Hall. Of course, I think the courthouse was being used for governmental use.
They still use, that's the courthouse.
And besides, I think behind there, there was a parking garage that went with City Hall, there was a small.
I think it was small, and it goes below grade back here.
Okay. All this is like the oldest dress shop in the South, mainly all that over here is bars, restaurants, so, really, this was only government building on the square.
Just for my ignorance, how far from the Grove is this?
It's probably half the distance between us and MTSU.
Half a mile.
It's a little friendlier to walk, it's a little closer walk. What do you need from, what do you need from us? Nothing. I mean, I.
Ideas, I mean, I think, I actually remembered, Sean, our discussion about that, and when I brought it up, when they kind of went over this with me yesterday, and they even talked about, I think Sam had the idea of the north and public square streets, is maybe getting those down to one lane, or maybe taking some of that parking and making those sidewalks larger and recapturing some of that space, maybe as a transition to something that you're talking about. So I think we've got the downtown study, we're going to kind of bring you a podcast of that, and we've got a video to reintroduce you all with that, and of course, you can go through it, but I think the next phase in the downtown study would be going out to engage interested individuals and trying to work some kind of collaboration with the city and see where we go next.
Can we also, in that collaboration, look at, the thing that sparked interest, too, is, it would be a big change on the metered parking to talk about that, and I would imagine probably a painful change that people would be upset with, but if we had the ability to be able to issue revenue bonds on that parking and for our structured parking, that we could show that that would cash flow, then we wouldn't have to put that on our general bonds, and that could support itself to be able to give parking downtown that would cash and revenue neutral, so we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to put that on our debt load.
It wouldn't count against us on our GO.
Yeah.
Speaking of parking, do they, do they charge for parking with those meters on Saturday? I'm just thinking of the farmer's market, for example.
I don't know exactly how they charge for it, I think on the parking garage, the more desirable floors you pay, the less desirable floors, so the second, third, and top, there is no charge for the parking garage there, but the bottom floor is charged.
Okay, but I'm thinking of the meters, you know.
I'm not sure, we can find that out.
Last question.
Get a picture of a sign or two that says, you know, Sunday is from 8 to 12, free parking.
Free parking.
I'm not going to say, I think they do have something like that.
Yeah, there's probably windows.
Yeah.
Charge or special events or something. The other question, since they implemented this, did they see an influx of people saying, hey, I want to move downtown, I want to live downtown? Because I think that's the ultimate goal, kind of like what Curtis said before, he wants people downtown.
They have a lot of development with living spaces downtown, that's something that came out of this, I think, just behind City Hall, there were some newer developments going in that had mixed use on the bottom and residential up top.
This was a rather large development here, those condos, townhomes.
Mm-hmm.
Balconies. Balconies. All right, just a couple, yeah, let me say just a couple things, because I was around when we had meters downtown, when they were cut down. when we had meters downtown, when they were cut down to the ground and, and that we thought we were really moving forward then, so. A couple of, a couple of things, man, thank you for this effort. I think this is, you know, that we focus on an important part of our, you know, community, but it, but it's vital that people, I think to our identity, what happens in our downtown area. The one thing I would encourage you to do, one, make sure like you're doing, get all the parties together, because there's a lot of different, you know, city, county, businesses, developers, all these people that have a stake in our downtown, getting those people together. But there's, to me, the more critical point is identify something that you can make a big difference with that are low hanging fruit, so we can see that it's just not another study, it's not just another thing that we've identified. We've always identified parking's an issue in our downtown. Try to identify something that's a low hanging fruit that we can, you know, plant our flag and say, we did this. Because I think that your issue about keeping the momentum going is going to be really critical for us accomplishing something. But all the pieces are there, you know, we have, as you've identified in Oxford, all the parts that need to take place are in our community, the will and the resources and the natural environment, you know, all the things that Main Street has done to draw people to our downtown, their awareness and a lot of, our, our community is aware that we have a downtown. They may have never visited there, or they haven't been there very often, but they know that we have a downtown because of the farmer's market and all the concerts and all the gathering places that we get together. So we've got that going for us, but, but I think the key thing is now, is because of some of the direction of some of the projects that we proposed, you know, we need to get beyond something on paper and see something on the ground that makes a difference in our downtown, so that we can all plant our flag and say, yeah, we did this because we worked together. And we can go to, we can claim the next part of that journey because we did something good. I think that, don't, don't, don't lose that, because I think that's, when you've done this much work already, let's identify something that we can claim and put our, you know, like I say, plant the flag and, and all claims that we, it was a success and I'm glad we got this far. But anyway, thank you for the work that you've done for downtown.
Thanks.
All right, let's move to Cherry Lane Corridor Area Plan Project. Sam?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, members of council. We do have a quick update today. Got Kevin Gunther, will make a presentation from Reagan Smith. We also have Brady Arbore with Keimlich Horn, they're assisting in the traffic analysis of the corridor. And so for timeliness, I'm gonna get out of the way and let Kevin do his thing. As soon as we can shut this thing down. Yes. Relax, it's not morning.
All right. Very good, thank you, Sam, and a pleasure to be here. We know this is a very important project to the city and the whole community, so we've been very pleased to have the opportunity to be part of the team. As Sam mentioned, we have, you know, staff here with Keimlich Horn, I also want to recognize Matt Hamilton with our office, who's very active on the project as well. So we'll go through this quickly. If you have any questions that you want to dive in deeper, we certainly can do that. You know, we have been looking at really the whole project from several different lenses. One of those is just the strategic value of the whole project. We recognize that this is a major east and west connector from a transportation standpoint. We recognize that the infrastructure that goes in out here, you want to see some return on that investment. And that the land use patterns that we're looking at, this is what you see is a feature land use map. We know this was highlighted as an area where we're trying to generate jobs and get some economic vitality. We also recognize that that paintbrush may have been a little unrealistic and needs to be reshaped as we really look at the transportation patterns that we know are going to work. We are doing close coordination with the city staff, all the departments, as well as the county, and, and certainly involving TDOT in the discussions. As I mentioned, this is going to be an investment not just for transportation, but also for utility infrastructure. We recognize that a lot of these parcels are going to have to cut the annexed and brought into the city and be serviced by the city. So we want to be very careful about evaluating the sanitary sewer, the water. We are working with Middle Tennessee Electric also to look at their improvements. We know there's some important improvements regarding not only sanitary sewer mains, but pump stations that are going to impact this area. So there's a lot going on in the transportation world on this corridor. We are pulling together all the data as we speak. We are getting modeling from the Greater National Regional, Regional Council. We think that's going to be updated in just a few weeks, so we want to use the most current data. We have done some look at the existing circulation and the existing data, and it's no surprise, we've acknowledged that there is congestion in the existing network, things like Thompson Lane are really seeing a lot of pressure, and we know this is going to help to alleviate some of that. And so that data is serving to feed our, our conclusions, but we recognize that, you know, the congestion that there is, is really no surprise. And then one of the bigger things we're looking at is this potential interchange with I-24. And what you see up there in the map, points A, B, C, and D are all very critical interchanges and points of transportation network that we're going to have to study. And that point A on I-24 is in heavy discussion with TDOT. We recognize that we may have to relocate that, we may have to look at adjusting the route to consider another option. There are no conclusions yet, this is all just something that we think is very important to consider in our evaluation. And a lot of the transportation intersection design, a lot of the access control management is going to feed quite a bit into our land use discussion on this. Last thing I want to mention is just that we are on schedule, we're tracking this very closely. We have regular meetings with our team, but also monthly meetings with the entire city staff, where we're updating everybody and making sure that the input is accurate and the feedback loops are tight. So we, we are on schedule to meet that, what you see as our projected timeline. One of the major steps that'll happen shortly will be a meeting with the stakeholders and the property owners, just to kind of update them and, and, and get that discussion going. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. That's, that's the part of my presentation that I have for you.
Is there any update on the property owner that we allowed to go, keep going through the process? Is there any, have they made application to the city, or you know, we know where that is?
We continue to have discussions with the interested developer in that. Right now, there is a lien on the property that ties back to the Sazerac Development Agreement, and so that lien stands in the way, the lien is activated upon the transfer or development.
No, I'm talking about the, the.
The board property. I'm sorry, had another parcel in mind. I'm not aware that, that we've heard back from them, but we, we can certainly reach out to that.
No need to reach out, they had to talk to the city, but, okay. All right, let's move to review of land swap with Swanson Development LP for Fire Station 13.
Mayor, I'll cover this. Thank you for the chance to go over this with you again. I had put some, some of this in some notes earlier this year, just to give you a heads up, that I'd met with Mr. Swanson, and that he was interested in a couple of tracks that the city owned, and we have an interest in a track that he owns. Prior to me bringing this back up though, I wanted the, you all to hear the Fire Station 12 and Fire Station 13 locations that Deputy Chief Bigelow gave last month to, to develop that priority. And I think while I wasn't here, what I understand is that Station 12 will be located at the Veterans Park property, and that is of higher demand, if you will, at, at the current time. Number 13, however, is still in demand at some point in the, in the near future. So I wanted to bring back the, the potential for this land swap. As you can see here, this is the corner of Northwest Broad and South Church Street. This is a 0.32 acres valued at $638,500. Mr. Swanson owns the, the property surrounding this, so he's interested in acquiring this piece of property. We also, along Joe B. Jackson Parkway, which was the site of Station, now the, the new site of Station 13, we have a, a 1.31 acre tract on Joe B. Jackson valued at $798,900. It's too small to, to construct a fire station on. Mr. Swanson has a 2.92 acre tract valued at the 1.78 million, a meet, you know, just, just to the west of that, and that's the property that we were, are interested in acquiring. And Michelle Emerson kind of did a little fire hall, number 13 conceptual layout that shows that that, that we wouldn't need that entire 2.92 acre site to get that, to get that fire hall located there. So really, this is the, the math, so to speak, if, if the city owns, and we're using the same square footage as, dollars per square foot on the Joe B. Jackson Parkway, uh, tracks, if you will. And then the $45.81, that, that's something that Mr. Swanson pulled together for, for the 0.32 acres on the northeast corner of Broad and Church. So in essence, we have about a $1.44 million land value, and Mr. Swanson has about a $1.78 million land value. These would all be subject to surveys and whatnot, but that would require us to put a, to, to, to make Mr. Swanson hold about a $343,000 outlay to make this land swap occur. So it, wanted to bring it up, if you all are, this is not asking you for a decision, but wanted, if you all kind of give me the nod, we can move forward with this and develop some type of land transfer or purchase and sale agreement with Mr. Swanson. I'm open for questions if you have any.
What would be the intent of the corner lot?
I don't know. It would just be combined with the rest of, of what's surrounding him. And I don't know if 0.32, I guess we could, I, I don't know the viability of, of us developing something on that 0.32 acres.
I mean, the only concern we need to think about is we already own three of the four corners right there, and we just had to take one of the corners of, you know.
Right.
We had to buy that corner for the, for the car lot, so I, I just would hate to see us trade a corner at that intersection where we've got so much going on right there and then have to at some point come back and say, hey, we need that corner.
We need it again. Well, we could always look at, if, if that, if that's something that, there's a hesitation to, to release, we could just look at the 1.3, would just increase the value, was it 800,000, about, be more closer to 900 and some odd thousand dollars to purchase the, the one on Joe B.
I mean, that's just a, that's not saying no, it's just a, a concern that, I mean, we had to condemn, or basically, we didn't condemn, we did a negotiation on the car lot, on the American car lot on the corner, and so.
That, now, I will say, that is a 0.35 acre lot, there's about a three hundredths of an acre, of, of, there's a right turn lane there that's going to be part of the road improvement, so I did, I did shave that off for the right of way. But I, point well taken, we can look at that and, and see if there's any, any unintended consequence for, maybe for giving that corner up, but, and talk to you, and then we'll come back.
I'm just one person.
Right.
We just, I mean, we've gone through South Front Street, having to acquire property on the corner there, so, you know, I'm just saying, it'd be a discussion to have with Joe, that if that's just something that he's not necessarily wanting to do, but like, hey, I'll trade for it. I mean, we, we are, we've got all three of the four corners right now that we, or we've got all four corners of that intersection right now.
Right. I'll have a, we can have another discussion.
The, the plan says a walkover on.
That's on the other side.
The, the, yeah, this is kind of where the pedestrian bridge would be somewhere, yeah, coming on the other side.
Aren't we going to do one on Church Street too?
Uh, there was, I think, Mr. Kerr, do we still have a, a potential to get a pedestrian bridge across South Church? I don't know if that's still out there.
Still moving, yes.
Still moving, so it's, it would be, I think, located, you know, between these two tracks here. I mean, if we, if we have a landing from over here to here, I wouldn't, I would imagine we would need to, we'd do it on the south side. Okay.
Just more, maybe just have more discussions, or y'all, not, is everybody okay with that?
I see, I don't see a strong, I see, I, I see a little bit of a waiver there.
What's everyone's thoughts? Would y'all rather look to see what both options would be if we purchased it outright?
That's a good, I think that's.
And have two, two options, like we keep the parcel, and then the other option is we trade the parcel?
Are you interested in keeping the 1.3, we'll be trading those, or just, okay?
Yeah.
Look at that option, or?
Wait, we're looking at Joe B. and Broad, or just Broad?
Well, that's what I was at, so right now, the, the formula I have is that we would be looking at Broad and Church and Joe B., our 1.31 compared to his 2.9.
Well, we need to do Joe B., right? Because we want the fire station. So you're just saying, do we want to do Broad Street?
I'm just saying, so go back to that option, Darren. We, we keep that option as a consideration.
Oh, the corner?
We keep that option as a, the, the math you just had.
Okay, math, gotcha.
So we keep that option, that would be option one for the council to consider. Option two would be removing northeast corner, and that would go up 638,500, that we would pay basically a million as opposed to that.
Didn't we need the northeast corner for Keystone?
Yes, this is, we're talking about the north, no, 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 we don't need, no, we do not, we need the north, northwest corner is where we're, we've got Keystone.
I think the discussion with, with Mr. Swanson would just be what, what would be the intent of, what would go on that corner? But, you know, our experience has been, it, it's not been selling property on corners in downtown, it's been, we've been having to acquire property on corners downtown, so.
And, and the issue is, that property, once what happens there happens, the value of that property, I don't care how we did the appraisal, it's going to significantly increase just because of what goes on around it.
Okay, sure.
So I'm, I'm more like the mayor to say, you know, I, I tend to say, try to do the deal without swapping that corner.
Okay.
And I mean, maybe the discussion too is if, if Joe comes in and says, hey, I've got an overall plan for this entire development, and, and I'm going to upgrade the Gold's Gym and Party Fowl and that IGA and that whole area, and this corner needs to be part of it, then, I mean, that's a great discussion to have at that point, but like, my opinion, just trading the property for it to be land bank for somebody and hoping that something will happen, I'd rather keep it.
Got it.
All right, so come back with the two options and discussions y'all have, and then we can discuss. All right, let's move to any questions for CIP transfers? All right, any questions on? Dashboard. All right, any board and commission appointments?
Nope.
Any beer permits?
We have one for a convenience store ownership change located at 2975 South Rutherford, Suite B. The applicant has met our requirements, and we recommend pending final building and codes inspections.
What's your second, please call the roll?
Ms. Everwater.
Hi.
Ms. Phil Harris.
Hi.
Mr. Maxwell.
Hi.
Mayor Shacklett.
Mr. Wade.
Hi.
Mr. Wright.
Hi.
Mayor McFarland.
Any other business from, yes, any other business from staff? Any other business from council? Darren, meeting schedule?
Uh, yes, we are not meeting next Thursday, Juneteenth holiday, and we are going to be meeting June 26th. We are not expected to meet July 3rd, and we are expected to meet July 10th and the 17th.
Okay.
I just, I got this information, I'm just about the bus, so I had to tell it. I'm going to be a grandmother December 26th.
Oh, yay!
This is my second.
Second, okay.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
About the bus.
All right, for all of our team that. All right, for all of our team that see Kerry Ginsimer, I know he will 100% be at Bonnaroo this weekend, so want to know, for lots going on this weekend, Kerry and his long hair will be at Bonnaroo this weekend. Appreciate everything y'all do, and with that, we'll stand adjourned.